Good morning, everyone. Let's see if this is on. Good morning, everyone. This is Mike Harmer, Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission. It is Saturday, January 21st, 2023, 10:00 for Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and public hearing. The meeting was noticed and things posted on the Internet or in wherever they were supposed to be per the rules. And we're convened to meeting. First thing we're going to do is do the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you join me?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. It stands one nation under God.
Roll call. We'll start with Jack.
Yeah. Jack Redifer.
Mark Wurkwhis.
Dave Lyons.
Mike Harmer.
Dale Cook.
Fred Townsend, Town Solicitor.
Jimmy Ertham.
Bill Zolfer, Town Manager.
All right. Thank you. And let's see, roll call. We'd like a motion to adopt today's agenda, which each of you have a copy, and it was also posted as amended. And we're going to just discuss the two items today about tents. So can we get a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second for someone? Jimmy? Jimmy with the second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right. We emailed the meeting minutes that Dave graciously has massively improved our ability to do great minutes. And thank you, Dave Lyons. And we emailed them to you. And we need someone to make a motion to approve a second and then discussion if there's any changes. So look for a motion filter.
Fair move to approve.
Second.
All right. Mark with the second. Any discussion? I saw no changes. And so with no changes, no discussion, we'll look for vote to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I see no nays. Takes care of that. All right. So the agenda, we just opened a public hearing regarding a draft ordinance to amend Article 3, 1-6 as posted, 1-16 definition in the municipal code of the town of Dewey Beach, Delaware 2005 by adding the definition of a tent. So I guess what we'll do is just go, let's just commissioners, and then we'll go to town manager, Bill Zolfer. And I think, I don't know if Gary Persinger's online, and then Dawn, and then we'll go to the public if that's acceptable. I, right now, we're looking at the definition of a tent, and I read it. And I know there's a lot of thoughts going into that from our town attorney and folks. So I don't have any comments on it other than, you know, I'm going to support it. So any other comments from the commissioners?
We also have this other ordinance related to enclosing or utilizing tents.
Correct. Well, I think we'll get to that. Like, I guess we can do both at the same. Should I just mention that and do both at the same time?
I think so. So we don't have to go twice around the room.
Perfect.
Yep.
All right. So the second one is that we're going to talk about is the public hearing regarding a draft ordinance to amend Chapter 185 zoning of the municipal code of the town of Dewey Beach, Delaware 2005 as amended by amending Table 3 of Section 185-25B, uses in resort business districts to permit tents over outside service areas as posted, as written, and we'll just cover both of them at the same time because it's so related. So any comments from anyone on the first one first? Let's say the definition or the second one. Jack, anything you want to say about it? Let's just go around the room.
Not at the moment, but depending on comments, I might.
All right. Mark, anything?
The same.
All right. Dave?
So I just want to say one thing. Whatever we decide here today is going to permeate everything. I mean, everything we decide here today is going to affect every business, everything we do through the town going forward. So I think we should just be considerate and consider that as we go forward today.
Yes. Yeah, you know, the concern might be, or you're going to turn into a tent city or whatever. And I think the commissioners and the town code officials have some wording in their building code that will also protect the town and make sure that the structures are safe. We, question for Fred on the ordinance allowing it is if we allow it, is it going to be permanent? Because at some point, it was like, there's like the three-day rule and all this stuff in the other parts of the code. So how's that working? Can you coach us on that?
Well, I think the intent of the ordinance is to allow, the intent of the ordinance regarding outside service areas is to allow these structures to be either up permanently or permitted to be erected or in place on a permanent basis.
Permanent basis, okay. And I will project an assumption, Dawn is here, Dawn will dial you in in a second, to maybe if there's any familiarity with the requirements, you know, of the town submittal, I'm just curious about that. It's out of our lane. But I was just curious, like, you know, is there a PE stamp needed or something? You know, what's, what's the protection that the thing's not going to blow away is kind of a little bit of a concern, but it's not under our purview. But I'll get to that in a minute.
Yeah. I've got a question for our town solicitor. So with, with this draft ordinance, as I'm reading, covering one, does that mean that they'll come to us with a request for a, a request to be able to erect? And then once they are confirmed, then they are grandfathered in? Is that what I'm reading? It's a good question, but that's, that's not the way I would read it.
Okay.
So the present circumstance is that if you've got a conditional use permit to operate a restaurant, you would have to seek a modification of that conditional use permit to allow you to enclose an outside service area with, with a tent. And you've, you've heard a number of applications. I can't, Jack, you're fairly new to this group.
Correct.
I think you sat in on, on some of those applications.
Yes.
Under the rest of us had. So in order to expand the outside service areas or to enclose them, it was deemed necessary to modify the permit. But if you were a existing non-conforming establishment, and we have a number of those, they cannot make use of that method.
They'd have to come to us.
Well, if this is, if this is adopted, they wouldn't have to come to us. So that is, that's the question. The, there's a premise that if you're a legal non-conforming establishment, that's fine. Your use predates the enactment of any code restrictions, and you're perfectly legal in operating, but you can't expand or modify your operation in a significant way. And if you, if you desire to, then there's a limitation placed upon you, and there's an obligation to go to the Board of Adjustment and seek approval from the Board of Adjustment in order to expand. This would essentially be an exception to that requirement if you were seeking to enclose an outside service area, not expand your building necessarily. But, but if you wished to tent a patron area that had been in use for a, you know, prior to the enactment of these code requirements, you would be allowed to do it if this ordinance is adopted by the commissioners. Thank you.
All right.
It's just for businesses.
Yeah. Thank you. It's just for businesses.
That's the intent.
What if the Lions Club wants to put a tent up for a three-day event?
So this would apply to establishments that are operating outdoor service areas. So I don't know that the Lions Club has an outdoor service area, if you will. So this is meant to apply just to restaurants.
That need to be specified in here, Fred?
I don't think so, but, you know, this is one of the benefits of having a conversation like this.
Right.
It refocuses me in different areas. So I will, I will, I'll indicate and then further follow up on this notion that the planning commission was concerned that the application of this was meant to be restricted to businesses.
Right. My question would be, okay, I have a, because there are homes in the RV district, right? So can I now put a tent up in, as a garage? I mean, that, that was the question. That's why I asked about businesses.
So I would say no, but we may want to look into the need to, to make it very clear because the garage is not an outside service area for patrons.
Right.
Right. Or at least the mall was closed down from how it thinks.
Hold up.
Yeah. Included in this. Is it temporary or permanent? That's what my question is.
Which also brings the yard league into it because this year, the yard league had all the tents set up down at the Lions office. So really, that's not a service area.
Really got permitted. Fire marshal came in. It was all.
The other question is, you know, if we've got, you know, families, large families doing barbecues in the RV district, and then it becomes a, you know, food service. We just want to make sure we're clearly dictating that it's food service or restaurant service.
The one, one way to deal with that, which is less formal, would be to include a synopsis that, that.
Clearly defines.
Yeah. That says, look, this is the purpose, and this purpose is not to authorize tents in, right? But there may be a better, more, more formal way of addressing it too, because the synopsis is not something.
There's quite a few homes that are owned as businesses or LLCs, so we want to make sure we clearly define how we hold, you know, that district.
So what we could do maybe is we could, you know, if we go with this wording, we can add a note that town solicitor would look into appropriate wording to clarify the intent and recommend that to the commissioners instead of us making up the words today. I think we can do that if that's your, if that's what we want to do.
Yeah. So paragraph, you know, number two is indicating existing non-conforming outdoor service areas. So I would say that that could not in any way be interpreted to mean that you can tent vehicles on a permanent basis. I'm sorry for which.
Where's that, Fred?
Two. That's in Section 1, the language that would, in the ordinance relating to.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Existing non-conforming areas, that, that section?
Yes.
He thinks that covers us, but he'll check it. I'll just make double check that.
Those are twice cut ones.
Yeah. Dale's got a question or a comment or?
Well, you're on. Number one, I'm a little at fault here because I don't understand the entire and have not reread the entire ordinance, I mean, the entire article or area that covers this in the charter or in the code. But what worried me most is size and duration. Is this intended to have the duration to be open-ended and any size of a tent to cover? And does it cover just tents and/or canopy?
The question of canopies is something that Dawn can speak to. It's certainly totally appropriate for us to be discussing canopies today in the context of what's on the agenda.
Okay, it is totally.
It is totally, yeah. We're well within a reasonable interpretation of the agenda to discuss canopies. Question of canopies is raising, raises whether they constitute a expansion of an existing non-conforming use or they don't. If the town says that they do, then I think this, this ordinance would either need to be modified to authorize them or, I can't imagine why the group would think it would be okay to have a tent on permanent basis, but not a canopy, which is something less than a, than a tent.
Right.
But there may be an appropriate reason to distinguish between the two. But, but what is intended here is, is to say that for establishments that are authorized through a conditional use permit, they shouldn't have to come in and do the modification process, which is, which is the double public hearing, and involves a recommendation from you and a hearing by the commissioners. The, the public policy behind it is the argument that, you know, we've had, we, we like outside seating. We, we like outside patron areas. We've got, we've had some experience with it now, and it's, jives with our intent to, to allow for social distancing and whatnot. Now, there are a lot of questions around that that I think we need to consider. And then secondly, we have a number of legal non-conforming establishments that don't have access to the process that would allow them to go modify their existing permit. So they shouldn't be left out. You know, that's what this, that's what's behind this proposal. And we'll hear from Mr. Spence on this when we open the public hearing, I'm sure. And this would allow them to do the same. So because right now, they're prohibited from expanding their establishments by law.
All right. So we, for the record, we are in a public hearing now because of the way the agenda was, but we're just getting to the public here in a minute. All right.
So Fred, just to make clear, they wouldn't have to come back, an establishment would not have to come back and go through the conditional use process. If we pass this, basically anybody can erect a tent. And I assume we're saying that they would have to get a permit or some kind of a building permit to do that, so that it would be regulated in some way in terms of size?
Well, the, the provision says, includes the language that the, you know, right to erect a tent shall be permitted subject to all building code fire marshal and setback requirements.
Perfect. It'll be on that as, you know, as, you know, business application, so that it'll be an individual review.
So there'd be an individual review as to what, what's being requested?
It's just not, what's, what we're, the fear is that everybody and their brother brings a tent or sister brings a tent to town.
That's right.
And important is we remember that we want to make sure that we bring people back to our community every year. I mean, we live by the 100 days we have. The other thing is we need to make sure is that we don't let it be a free-for-all because things we do today are generational impacts. So I think that making sure that we have the right application statuses and programs, which it sounds like we are having as well as not letting it become a free-for-all.
Right.
I'd like to add, what about a duration for residential? Say, is this for a day or it can only be for three days? For instance, let's say a holiday weekend. Okay, yeah, they want to have the tent up for three days because they're going to have a bunch of family. Rather than saying you can do it, put the tent up and leave it there forever. That's basically what they could do. Go and put a tent up, just like on the beach with the big tents.
Right.
You could basically put a tent up in your yard and you just leave it there. Whereas if, when you apply, you say, I need, I would like to have a tent on my property for the weekend of, Fourth of July, whatever, and then they go through the process. Just a suggestion.
Well, we could always do more, but I don't think this proposal is meant to speak to residential uses at all.
I have one other question. Is there a thought, I mean, in the off-season, we do get high winds and, you know, big storms. Is there a time in which, you know, we're going to call it the true off-season, that potentially those tents come down or they're strengthened? Is there another review process to make sure that if they're up, they're protected and safe? Because we've got, we get pretty big storms come through town.
Yeah. So we, we're in a public hearing, and online we have Dawn Hanks, and she can explain the building permitting process. Now, keep in mind, this is, you know, Fred's going to make sure that it's clear that this is for outdoor dining areas to start with.
So I do notice that the title of the ordinance is referring to resort business districts only.
Right.
So that's argument number one, and this is not authorizing tents in residential.
All right. So at this point, I know we have Dawn Hanks, Jim Deeds, and Commissioner Gary, Gary Persinger out there, and one more, and that's it out there. So Dawn's on, and if you can talk, Dawn, any comments on the building, building permitting process that we can enjoy if this gets approved?
Good morning, gentlemen. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Very good. Okay. So when it comes to a building permit, there are different parameters. There is a process, although the same application, yet at the same time, the way building permits are viewed is, has to do with residential and then commercial. The parameters for residential and those requirements do not apply to commercial buildings, commercial use, anything of that nature. Also, the fire marshal does not get involved with residential codes. That is per their code through the state of Delaware. When it comes to commercial buildings, commercial structures, commercial anything, that is strictly regulated by the International Building Code. And those particular codes are much more strict and require different parameters. The state fire marshal does get involved with those particular kinds of applications. And in talking with the local state fire marshal office, Dwayne Fox, who's the head of the office in Georgetown, stated that it would be up to the town to let their, their office know what's going on in, in the town when it comes to commercial structures and whether or not it needs to have state fire marshal permitting. Also, the county is involved with that. They do have a segment where they have a commercial plans review, totally different from residential. Now, under the, a commercial plans review, there is various sub, subcolumns of review. And when it comes to a restaurant, which is basically what we're talking about here in outside dining, the kind of review is based on what's called assembly. It reviews the size, the space, the amount of space, the amount of tables, restroom, restroom use, and making sure that there's a restroom in there and so forth. Different parameters, and that does not carry over to residential. So when it comes to those particular parameters, then the town would need to let both the county know as well as the state fire marshal to know what's going on when it comes to tents. Both the county and the state fire marshal's office do have parameters when it comes to what their code requires, when it comes to permanent tenting, temporary tenting, event tenting, and things of that nature, whether or not the tent has a roof over it, any walls down the sides and so forth. So with that, the town does not have a tent definition, and that's what we need to talk about. So this ordinance that has come up has nothing to do with residential. The folks in town, they're having a party in the backyard, and they want to have some sort of weather protection. This is not referencing that. And then, of course, when it comes to anything commercial being done here in town, because there is a life safety code, it is required that all businesses have the public safety involved and that mindset. So a building code, a building permit is required by both the town, the county, and the state fire marshal's office when it comes to commercial establishments. And in this reference, we're talking about the restaurants in town. We're not talking about mixed-use structures and so forth. So hopefully, I've added a little bit of information, and I have a feeling it may be open to more questions and so forth.
Yeah. Dale does have a question, and I think you're very thorough as, as usual. So thank you very much for your complete explanation of that. Thank you.
All right. Again, I didn't understand, does this or does this not cover canopies? In other words, covers, covers that do not have sides and therefore couldn't be considered a tent?
From, from what I see, we do not have a tent definition. We do have a canopy definition, which in our code, it says it is a detachable roof-like cover, supported from the ground deck or floor or walls of a building for protection from sun or weather. From the building code parameters, and also from what I have gleaned from the state fire marshal, if something is simply a roof-like cover, that is totally viewed differently than something that has rolled-down sides, which encloses perhaps the roof-like cover. And so the canopy, let me see here. From the state fire marshal office, the state fire marshal office is apparently not concerned with just having a roof-like cover, canopy or awning with a material on the top. It's when the sides are enclosed that becomes their concern because it creates an enclosure that should there be an emergency within that interior space, can those folks get out? Can the fire department or any emergency personnel get in without having such turmoil of making sure things are cut, they can open it up? Or are there other things that are preventing either ingress or egress? It's the sides that apparently make it much more concerning.
Dawn, Dale Cook again. I guess another thing I'm worried about is what here would give the town the right to limit the size and duration of the tent and/or canopy? Now, if I'm a business and want to enclose my entire property in a tent for six months at a time, is that viable? Or can, can the town say no?
Well, from what I have looked through the code, I don't see where there's been any requirement to say you can have it one day, one hour, six months, four years, a, the word "structure," let me look up the definition.
Dawn, before this, we always had requests for like three days at a time for a special event. We never had this come up until the, until the COVID came along.
Correct. That's my understanding.
Can I take a stab?
Yeah. Fred, Fred wants to chime in. I think what you're, you know, my understanding, Fred, you're probably looking at, we did say this is permanent, but then the outdoors, the outdoor areas are already defined by, you know, the previous things we approved. So go ahead, Fred.
Right. The, the existing ordinance related to tents is concerning the right to enclose with a permit a parking lot or a non-service area and convert it into a service area on a temporary basis. So that's a different circumstance than what we're talking about here. We're, we're talking about authorizing a cover of some sort over an existing outside service area. And it, I think if this ordinance passes, we still need the provisions that relate to having some kind of an event outside of your outside service area.
For example, the weekend at Starkville. That's a special event, right?
Yes.
I think that's what Dale's trying.
And they are not, they, they're converting areas that, where they're not permitted to, on a regular basis, to have outside service into outside service areas for a three-day period max or a one-day period.
I just wanted to back that up.
Yeah.
All right.
One more, Dawn, maybe. Is there a difference between when someone would apply for a canopy versus a tent? And are there different approval? Is there a different approval process?
In actuality, anytime there's a permit applied for, it goes through the same process, the whole complete zoning code and/or the building code, which is then reviewed by the county, and then in the commercial aspect, the state fire marshal. Those two processes are still in effect regardless of what is being permitted. The town always looks at things from a zoning or a floodplain viewpoint and review process. So a canopy, if something came to me for a canopy, I'd review it for the zoning. Where's it located? Is it over just the actual property itself? Does it go over a public sidewalk and so forth? So if everything were fine zoning-wise, and of course, a canopy and... So if everything were fine zoning-wise, and of course, a canopy in the floodplain really does not uh the floodplain FEMA codes do don't apply, then I would say we're fine from zoning. Uh, now it goes to the county for their review uh because it is a structure or something that is built. And so from a commercial aspect, it would go through a commercial plans review from the county. The county would then make sure that the fire marshal is has at least been aware of such a a structure being built. The fire marshal may say, yes, we've reviewed it. It's fine. Here's our letter of approval. Or uh it would may say, we have no objection and it's it's fine and so forth. So those commercial aspects go through county and state fire marshal.
Dawn, Jack Rutherford here. I just wanted to thank you for your explanation and and thorough review of the entire process. I think a lot of times um members of the community, as well as myself, uh, we we tend to get worrisome of of how things um once application is made and the process. So understanding thoroughly how we get from application to um going vertical is very important. So I just wanted to thank you uh for your your well knowledge in in this topic.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Uh, let's see, Commissioner Persinger? Anything you want to say? And we'll get to Jim Deeds next, and then Steve Spence is in the audience.
Sure. Uh, when the commissioners took up this issue last month, and we refer this to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, I made a number of comments, raised a number of issues about this this topic. Uh, and our vote, we voted unanimously to refer this to Planning and Zoning Commission along with my comments. And so my purpose in being here today is really to provide you with some of those comments. Uh, you've already raised some of the issues that that I talked about in December. Uh, first of all, canopies. Um, the the ordinance is drafted right now, I believe, does not address the issue of canopies, particularly for a non-conforming business. So, you know, if if you're a non-conforming business and you want to put up, you have an outside service area and you want to put up a canopy, uh, it seems reasonable you should be able to do that um just as much as you would be able to do a a tent. Uh, and awning, I think, uh, probably falls into the to the same categorization. Um, all of those things, I believe, if I heard Dawn correctly, uh, would be considered structures. They all require building permits from the town. And so they would be free to consistently in in that respect. But yeah, I think, you know, particularly for a non-conforming uh business, uh, the the hang-up here has been section 185 dash 60, which is extension of non-conforming use or or building. And putting up an awning or putting up a tent or putting up a canopy, I think, has been viewed um as an extension or expansion. I personally think that point's arguable, but you know, that's it's not my uh judgment that that should prevail here. Um, you know, I I think you need to give some consideration to that so that, again, the the businesses have an opportunity to do this. Uh, there is another uh part of um the table that you would be amending with with this ordinance, and it's table three in the town code. There's a later section that talks about special exceptions. The town attorney's already mentioned mentioned this. The town commissioners do have the ability right now under the current code to approve um events that are three days or less in in nature. You could, you know, you could prove a tent, uh, construction of a tent for that event. Uh, there are some, there's some strange wording, I think, uh, in there. That section talks about tents of all types, but then it has some qualifications that if it's to be used over a parking lot, it can encompass more than 2,000 square feet, and it it can't be used between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM from May 15 to September 15. Perhaps this is not the the right uh forum at the moment to consider whether or not that language makes any sense. But I I think at some point, we uh you, we, as as town council, probably uh should uh should revisit some of that. So um, let me see, um. I think that's, I think that covers it pretty well. Again, you've you've already covered some of the issues that that I was concerned about. Um, and this does, this is, you know, limited in scope, what you're considering just to outside service areas, whether it's a conforming business that doesn't have one unless it goes to the conditional use process to get one, or it's already a non-conforming business with with a service area. It is limited to that context, so I would agree, not talking about residences here.
Eric has following a question. One of the things you mentioned here is a tent that's installed and heated may may not may not be considered outdoor space. In other words, that it's it's a permanent structure, right? It's included in the in the building or in the building.
I don't know the answer to that. I just I raised the question only to say, you know, if you if you put up a tent, maybe it's an outside service area, and you plan to keep that there forever. Uh, it's heated, it's air-conditioned, um, you know, should that be considered differently than a a tent where you roll the sides up periodically? Um, and maybe you have it heated to some degree in the winter, but it's, you know, it's not really a permanent uh a permanent thing with air conditioning and and heating. One one other thing I wanted to to uh, one other issue that I had raised when when we talked about this uh last month. And that is, uh, you know, if you you meet all the requirements in terms of permitting and fire marshal requirements for a tent, um, what if you take that tent down uh for a special event? Uh, do you go back through the same process again in terms of permitting to to re-erect that that same structure? Um, and, you know, I again, I raised that as a question. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know what I think the answer should be, but uh I think that could be an issue.
Just one last comment, and then what is? What would be the difference between a tent and permanently building or expanding a building with a standard roof? You know, it could be an open-air building, right? But but something that's permanent. I mean, why? What's by a tent versus actually building out your building and 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 putting a roof over it? It doesn't necessarily have to be enclosed or it could be closed with windows or something like that. Why? Why go down this tent path if that's another alternative?
Just just as an example, I I hate that we're picking on is the starboard. I mean, they have their tent up in the summer. There's parking spots. So in the off-season, they've got bingo and other events. So I would assume the tent versus uh applying for a structure is that can be moved and I can retain my parking spots in the off-season for, you know, when parking is free. That would be just a a guess, but I you raise a good point.
Well, there there are size limitations uh that apply. You know, there's there are restrictions on building um uh expanding your existing buildings that that apply differently to whether you're conforming or non-conforming, but it's going to relate to, you know, whether you have the available space, whether you have um whether you're um, you know, it's just a a wholesale number of different considerations there. But your question is illustrating. Um, you know, if if we want, if we want to add tents, which are which could be air-conditioned spaces under the premise that social distancing is a a public policy we we want to encourage, are we are we getting any bang for our our buck? And are we um? Are we essentially, you know, just allowing for uncontrolled expansion?
Exactly. That's my point, right? You said that if you build a put a building up, a structure, it's it's limited based on its size and and the rest of our building standards. Are we not just side, just bypassing all of that by just allowing anybody to erect a tent?
Well, and and we'll hear from um Mr. Spence and and others. But the counterargument here is that this is restricted to existing outside service areas. One of the questions I'm going to have either for Dawn and and Mr. Spence can speak to it as well as, do do we have any documented evidence of what existing outside service areas are limited to in the case of legal non-conforming um structures? I mean, we we should, but by definition, we never permitted them to begin with. So how do how do we know what the effect of this will be as it relates to legal non-conforming buildings now or or establishments? For conforming ones, we do know. Um, we we have a designation of what their um outside service areas are, and we can essentially enforce that they not be expanded beyond the permitted areas. Um, pardon me. Uh, lastly, um, the uh ABCC commissioner or OA uh BCC, whatever they're calling it now, um, does also authorize um and prohibit um uh outside service areas beyond the approved boundaries. And maybe that should, maybe uh if those permits are shared with us, then um, we can then define those areas and consider. It's this, it puts us in a better position for for getting a handle on what you might be doing if the commissioners were to adopt this ordinance.
See, I think we uh, short of anyone else online wanting to talk, I don't know if Jim, you want to say anything?
I just want, I I would like to just point out, our job was to come up with a a dep- a a definition of what we consider a tent to be. We didn't get into all the factors from what Gary has brought up and some of the questions you all brought up. And we didn't put a limit on the size or we didn't say how often. But we ruled that uh we went followed by what the fire marshal said that they're good for 180 days. And I think somebody pointed out, what would do they, what happens after the 180 days? And and I guess I read Dawn and I have chatted a little bit about it, but they got to come down and then they have to come back up and apply to put them back up because they're only limited to 180 days by the fire marshal. So.
All right.
And that's it. And and all the reg, if you want to limit the size of a tent and so forth, that was not within the bounds of the definition. We just simply wanted to say uh a definition is a temporary structure because it's it's a membrane and fabric service with potentially roll-down sides. So that's where we're at.
But one of the confusing things here is that the only reason we really have gone down this road of defining what a tent is is because we have this uh desire to consider whether it's appropriate to tent outside service areas or cover them in in some way. And then it was pointed out, well, we don't really even have a definition of tent. And then we spent like a colossal amount of time defining what a tent is. But really, if we don't adopt the the main ordinance, we don't really need a definition of tent. So I think the the main subject matter here is uh, are we going to say it's an exception to any expansion of an of an existing conditional use permit? Or an exception to any prohibition against expanding a legal non-conforming establishment? Are we going to allow tents and canopies? Um, that's that's the main question. I don't think we even need this tent definition if we don't if we don't um recommend approval of this. And actually, as you know, you can recommend approval and the commissioners can uh reject your recommendation and vice versa.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, Gary, uh, Commissioner Persinger, did I cut you off or were you uh done?
You you did not cut me off, but but based on Jim's comments, I I just had one other point. I heard a slightly different interpretation of the fire marshal's policy that that if if a tent stayed up for, uh, you know, less than six months, that if the six-month period would have to come down. But as I understood it, there was an opportunity for someone to apply in some sense for permanent status with the uh, one of the major distinguishing characteristics of a permanent tent is that there be some sort of identifiable or recognizable uh door in some sense so that, you know, patrons know exactly where to go uh if, in fact, they need to leave quickly. And Dawn or Jim, you know, maybe you can correct me, but that that was the impression that I was left with from the fire marshal's presentation.
That's Dawn.
Yes, um. I have uh in front of me an email from Dwayne Fox because I asked the various kind of questions that we're discussing here. And if you'll allow me, I'll just be able to read their brief, his brief explanation. Because I had asked, do you need to be uh informed when it comes to tenting? And so Dwayne states tents for assembly use are required to obtain a permit for use. Temporary membrane structures or tents can only be permitted for 180 days. Then the tent must be removed. Of course, it could be erected the next day with a new permit. Tent permits cost a whopping $25. Or they can do a permanent structure via the normal plan review process. A roof-only tent does not require a permit from the state fire marshal's office. When we look at decks, et cetera, we note whether or not roll-down sides are part of the permit. Roll-downs have to carry a fire resistance. If added after our final inspections, they would need a separate permit. Uh, and so then he told, he just basically talks about one of the local restaurants gets a permit ten, uh, excuse me, a tent permit every time for their colder events. And there's, that was his explanation on that email.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Uh, as as nor as usual, you know, you're thorough and uh have the answers uh right on the spot. So thank you, Dawn. Uh, you anticipated questions well, had answers, and I think we clarified that for sure. Uh, any anyone else online want to say anything before we go to Mr. Spence, who's sitting here in our lifeguard station? I see none online, so Mr. Spence, um, good morning. Um, would you like to tell us a few things or talk to us?
Oh, Steve Spence, I'm an attorney uh in with offices in Lewis, and I have for many years represented the interests of the Highway One Limited Partnership Group, which owns and operates various facilities in Dewey that fit both categories, both conditional use-approved uh facilities with outside service areas and uh several which are uh non-conforming permitted uses uh within the town, uh, including the Rusty Rudder and North Beach, which for which it is only a tenant um at the location. And uh the drafting of the ordinance, the proposed ordinance was my work originally originally as a uh offer to the town to try to uh improve on what we perceive to be customer experience in the hotter months in particular. Um, we tried a canopy-type structure over the parking lot that pursuant to COVID rules had been expanded by Jimmy's Grill. And this summer and fall, we applied for a permanent right to have a conditional use patio in that area, and that was ultimately approved. The canopy uh concept didn't work particularly well because of high-wind issues and weather-related issues where it basically didn't, it didn't fare well structurally uh based on weather conditions. And so when my client asked, well, can I put a tent up? And I said, I don't know the answer to that because it's not clear from the code that you can. And why don't we try to draft something that gives some clarification to that whole question? So that was the genesis of it as it related to Jimmy's and our experience with using a canopy in the summer of 2022. What we did learn is that customers like the outside outside service area concept, and we think that has been true generally within town. Uh, our other facilities that are non-conforming facilities historically, without getting into the particulars because I don't have the actual proofs in front of me, but there had been requests made in the past in not not really since COVID started, but prior to COVID. Uh, there had been some discussions about what to do with the Rusty Rudder deck and whether or not we could put any kind of a canopy or tent structure on it. Uh, and again, to uh improve customer experience because in the hotter summer months, it's hot out there on the deck in midday and through the afternoons. And uh that, in our view, drives down the use, number one, um, also weathers it dramatically. Um, but uh but we're trying to improve customer experience, and it's just too hot out there a lot of days. So uh, but the response we typically got from the town was uncertainty because of the non-conforming as to whether we're now uh creating an expansion of a non-conforming use. Uh, and the code is not particularly helpful on that subject in terms of how to do that and how to go about doing that and whether you can do it at all. Um, and uh, over the years, we basically attempted, did some design work, made some proposals, but ultimately never actually uh finalized an approval to do any of those things except for the occasional single-purpose three-day uh use event. I think we just had, I think we just had a tent up for New Year's, for example. Um, I didn't go, but I think there was a tent on the deck. Um, and we've been doing that through the special exception process that exists uh already in the code. Um, but any event, so the genesis of the drafting of this proposed ordinance was originally uh based on a discussion I had with Mr. Pyres and others, John Snow and others. Pyres and others, John Snow and others, about the fact that the code just doesn't answer this question very well, why don't we try to develop an answer? So when we drafted, we wanted to limit it to RB districts, only conditional use-approved service areas, and service areas in non-conforming uses, which in our view covered the rudder deck in particular. And conceptually, North Beach, I suppose, in theory, you could put it, you could attempt, if this were passed, to put a tent over the, what I call the beach area of North Beach. In theory, you could put it, I'm just thinking out loud, you could theoretically put a tent over the outside service area at Ivy, although Ivy's not open on a regular basis. And one of the other questions that came up during the discussion is, why not a permanent structure versus a tent? And, well, two things. One is, as long as you can meet all the other requirements of a conditional use, you could build a structure if you wanted to. But frankly, using Jimmy's as the example, when it was originally built, it was largely maxed out as to its square footage requirements related to not having to have parking. But with the change in the code that came about in the last 12 months, where the size of a restaurant can now go to 4,000 square feet, that might make more capital, and capital investment, and economic sense, if you wanted to just build a bigger building, to fit it all, if you will. But there's a whole lot less capital expense to put a tent up than there is to build a building, both from a design, approval, construction costs, material costs, and the like, than there is to just put a tent up. On the concept of how long a tent would be up, I think the Fire Marshal rules are a little confusing, but it is safe to say that if you have a tent up that's for no more than 180 days, it's relatively inexpensive, except for the cost of doing it, you know, physically putting up, physically taking it down. We generally are of the view that leaving a tent up in the winter is kind of stupid, unless you want to leave it up just for, until you get to New Year's, I guess, just because you are risking weather problems, you are risking damage, just substantial additional weathering of the, you know, it's not structure, it's a fabric. But our goal was to have the ability during our summer seasons, if we wanted to, and wanted to incur the capital costs and get the permits, to be able to put a tent over the outside service areas that we have. And we thought, frankly, although I confess that we remain, and this is not a plug or a critical comment about how it is that Starboard got what it got recently, so I'm not entirely certain whether the parking lot is now an outside, allowed outside service area or not, I'm not really sure. I'm not going to worry about it. At the extent they have the right to put a tent up there and have it out there all summer, hey, so be it, you know? Why, how they got there, and why they got there is sort of irrelevant to the conversation. But our view was, let's try to clarify, so that we're not trying to do something that's not permitted, and we're not having to fight with everybody about it. We'd like to actually define, well, actually, it's funny, in fairness to the town, the town came up with the definition of a tent, which I agree was a good idea, but I came up with the draft of the ordinance system. What is that we would have the power to do at RB facilities during, in our minds, in the summer? Care? I don't want to speak for every other operator in town. I don't think we particularly care whether there's some limit on whether you can heat it, or air condition it, or whatever. I mean, that wasn't really what our plan was. I realize that the definition and the language doesn't limit it, but I don't know how significant that is in the greater scheme of things. I know that there are some, you know, what I would call temporary pieces of equipment you can use to heat. You know, you've seen the little, you know, propane things, the electric heaters, you can use that are temporary. And I think that probably is helpful for, you know, if it goes down to 60-some night or whatever, I must admit, I don't spend a lot of time in late night in Dewey, I just don't know.
It is nice, not just in Dewey, they allow it in.
Right. So I'm not, I don't want to necessarily restrict, but it wasn't really our primary goal, is to start, you know, having massively, you know, 12-month-a-year tent systems up so we can stay open all year round. That's not, we don't have, the people aren't here to do that. So, but we do want to try to get this approved, that for sure. We hope that you will consider doing that. At the extent you need to tinker with the definition of tent at all, so be it, as long as we end up in the same place, which is that outside, conditional use-approved service areas can erect a tent, if they get all their permits, comply with setback, and, you know, Fire Marshal. And for those who are, in our case, we have, since we have several non-conforming facilities, we'd like to have the same right to do the same things there. It's not very complicated to figure out what the outside service areas are. It is true that there are four plans with the ABCC that would establish that, and we don't want to tinker, I mean, the last thing we want to do is get into areas where the ABCC's upset with us about something. So, you know, that's not something, it's difficult to establish. But we are in favor of doing it, and we hope you will consider recommending that to the larger group.
I just have a follow-up, Mr. Spence. So you're not suggesting or asking to be able to establish a tent in like, a parking area, a parking lot, right?
It's got to have been a, it's got to have been an existing approved, conditional use outside service area, or a non-conforming existing outside service area. We're not asking for a parking lot. We're not going to, I think we might have, I think at one public hearing, Mr. Pyres was sufficiently frustrated with what was happening at Starboard, that he was suggesting he was going to put a tent up in his parking lot. But I think that was because, if you think about what was happening, that's exactly what the Starboard was doing, was putting a tent up in his parking lot. But that's again, we're not here to argue that particular point.
That's my answer.
Yeah. If we were going to try to do that, we would obviously have to get a conditional use approval, and that isn't happening. That's not happening at the rudder, using that as an example, even though we've talked a lot about it. We have talked about using the three-day rule for an occasional event, like a racing event. I think that we did actually do that for a racing event this year, street, you know, road race. But no. It's not.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything for me?
Is anybody else?
I don't have anything. Do you guys have anything?
So, could I ask a couple of questions? So your occupancy is, or these establishments have a defined occupancy, which is not going to be expanded as a result of this proposal, is that right? I mean, the patron area is calculated in your occupancy, the outside patron area is calculated in your occupancy, or not?
We'll do it one at a time. With respect to Jimmy's Grill, we just got approval to expand into a patty area with a certain amount of additional seating. It's 40 by 50, I think, is the square footage that we've got permission to use. And I can't remember the amount of seating, but it's well within Fire Marshal limits. And this, and by way of example, if we were to put a tent up, there's a setback requirement on the front side, and at the corner, there's like a cut, there's like a triangular setback that you have to meet. And so if we're going to try to do something there, we'd actually be slightly restricting where the tent would be smaller than our service area, let's put it that way, just a little bit. In the non-conforming facilities, if that's what we're talking about, the occupancy, I don't know whether the Fire Marshal does an occupancy calculation for an outside service area that doesn't have any vertical structures on it, because they usually are making those calculations based upon interior space, and ingress and egress, and how big your doors have to be, and how much area you have to be able to get in and out. So I honestly don't know whether we have, I know we have a Fire Marshal occupancy calculation, but I don't know whether it includes the outside service area or not. I honestly don't know.
Yeah. So the reason I ask that is that when the OABCC relaxed its rules under the COVID state of emergency, it included a provision that said that you can utilize these outside service areas, but only to a certain percentage, and ultimately maybe even 100% of your approved occupancy, which I guess is building-related primarily.
I think, but I don't know that for sure. At the end of the day, with the exception of the Jimmy's Grill parking lot, I think we actually expanded anywhere, we built, we actually tried to do a small expansion in North Beach, and then we realized we weren't doing it right, so we gave up that concept. We had built a volleyball court on the southwest side, if you will, or southeast side, excuse me, of the permitted, of our enclosed area, I'll call it. But apparently we didn't get all the right approvals for that, and so we just stopped doing that. But, I forgot, the rudder, that was COVID-related, other than the, you know, the seat, since we had to do. So I don't know if that helps or not, but.
So you had indicated that Jimmy's Grill turned out not to be a great site for utilizing a canopy, just structurally.
Well, the version we used didn't hold off very well. It got torn up in various weather events.
How about the Rusty Rudder? Because at one point, I think you indicated that, as far as the Rusty Rudder is concerned, it was being shielded from the sun that was the primary motivator for going down this road.
Well, it was, and still is. But I think we kept getting pushback, not necessarily from Dawn, but from prior building officials, about being able to do anything out there that would somehow, that would be deemed an expansion.
By the county?
No, the town.
That was some time ago, but I mean, when you last brought this up, I think you indicated that with respect to the Rusty Rudder, your initial motivation was to get some shield from the sun, as opposed to.
Yes. As opposed to necessarily enclosing the entire area. Although, as I said, we must admit, I didn't distinguish between canopies and tents when I was drafting the proposed ordinance that I drafted. The definition of tent does, to the extent that it contemplates that there are going to be sides, and I hadn't really thought that, given that much thought, quite frankly. I didn't draft that particular ordinance, or that particular definition. Helps at all.
Well, do you need sides at Rusty Rudder? Or you just want to be treated the same way as everybody else?
I think, I think they were going to be treated as everybody else, that, you know, word I heard was, yes, they might have some sides if it's raining and it's windy, you know, in the summer.
But if they erect a canopy, if they were permitted to erect a canopy and chose to do that, they wouldn't be able to put.
That's correct, if they permitted a canopy, right. They're going to permit a tent, is my understanding.
Well, the draft ordinance that I proposed was to permit a tent.
Yeah.
I had not thought too much about the, what that definition would entail, excuse me. And so, two things. One, I agree that we would like to be treated like everybody else, and one of our everybody else's is one of our competitors, and I understand that. And I also think that there's a, I mean, this is not for me to decide, quite frankly, it's my client's decision, but there's a point you reach where if you build a tent and you put sides on it, you're going to, people are not going to come, because they don't want to go inside, they want to be outside. And so you have to make the business decision of when is it appropriate to even have a side. Weather will drive that, you know, windy, bad weather will drive that. But if it's just hot, nobody's going to want the sides down, because then you're going to have to spend thousands and thousands of dollars air conditioning in the same space that you can otherwise take the breezes off the road with Bay. So, there's a plus and a minus to all that.
In the case of the Rusty Rudder, you would be depriving yourself of a view, if you had the sides down.
Right. So I mean, I kind of view it as there's a business reason why you might want to have sides for certain reasons, but most of the time, if the weather's halfway decent, you're just trying to get the heat off. So I don't know that we want to be restricted so much as, it's going to drive its own, you know, analysis when you do it.
I think we want to make sure that, yeah, everybody's getting treated equally, as well as have the flexibility for application on situational use, because summer storms come in, they quickly come and go. So we don't want to, you know, handicap a certain business or certain area to application.
And then, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So North Beach has an outside service area? I'm not.
It has, well, you have to walk over to North Beach. North Beach inside service area is very small. Historically, it's, I don't know, it might be 2,000 square feet inside, maybe, but it has times that outside. It's got the, on the north side, adjacent to the Ivy property, it's got a beach area that's been there for as long as I can remember, that is, got tables and a couple of wet bars out there, but there's no roof over it, it's just a beach area. And then on the south side, there is a area that has had a structure over top of it, a roof, excuse me, but it's open-air, and has been for as long as I can remember. And for some period of time, Dawn would know more about this than I do, but for some period of time, over the last few years, they've actually gotten permission to put up a canopy in the summer, and they take it down. And it's a structural, significant structure, because again, wind and weather, but it's only been, it's been put up in the summer and taken down in the fall to protect that south-side area. There is, when you first walk in, there's a, it's not, it's a sand and a fire pit, and then you get to the covered area that has the two bars, I think, there. And then there's the building to the right, kitchen, bar, the stage area, some seating, and then on the north side is the, is what I call the beach. So it has a significant outside service area. Again, the, I don't want to predict what the client would do, or ask for permission to do, in terms of putting a tent up in any of those locations, because I think they, it'll be driven by weather and weather considerations, as opposed to, you know, changing the entire concept over there. And by the way, again, a capital structure issue, non-conforming, can't expand it without permission, and we don't know. It's, I think, max, we have five years, maybe? Five or six? How many years left? Four years left, at max. So, you know, the likelihood of us making a capital improvement like that is pretty insignificant.
So, I know you're speaking roughly, you said perhaps 2,000 space, 2,000 square feet of area in your building, in your client's building, and maybe three times that much outside, and that's established in your OABCC permit?
Well, four plans, yeah.
And would this, would this ordinance allow for the location, in your opinion, of any, you know, like, bar service areas? I mean, any of these outside areas also have bars, where?
In the North Beach north side, there is a, what is referred to as a wet bar, which is a service bar on the outside, and the, and there is a bar on the south side as well that's undercover, but it's not inside a building. At the rudder, there is a bar that is under roof, but is outside. And on the north side of the deck, there's an outside, under-roof, it's where the stage is, and then there's a bar, and it's all under roof, and has been for some number of years.
Wouldn't cover those bars?
Yeah, they're already, the ones that, well, except for the north side of the North Beach, that's not covered, but the others are already covered.
So I guess the question is.
And Jimmy's Grill, we didn't ask for permission to do that, that's just an outside service area in the traditional sense.
And if you were to do that, that would require approval.
Yeah, if you're going to add a bar anywhere, you have to get approval, and you have to give notice. I mean, putting aside what we might have to do with the town, you'd have to give the thousand-foot notice as well, to, you know, everybody within a thousand feet of that Test risks, et cetera.
Anything else, Mr. Spence?
Unless there's other questions for me, again, we would hope that you'll consider recommending it, and other than that, I don't have any particular comments.
All right. At this point, I see no one new online, no one in the audience. Bill?
So I want to ask Mr. Townsend. So just so everybody's clear, if this ordinance, the way it reads, no service areas, no, whether it's non-conforming, already existing, or the ones that have just been approved in the past year, we're not expanding any service area.
Correct.
No, no service areas are being expanded. So we're not, all they're, all we're trying to do is define what a tent is, and then go ahead and set some rules up with, if they want to put a tent up, we want our business owners in town to know what they can, they can't do, and what the process is. And I think what's laid out here, with the exception of a couple of questions, kind of lays that out. If it's more than 180 days, there's a lot more restrictions than if it's less than 180 days. So they're not making their establishment really any bigger, they've already been approved for these areas, and all they want to do is either put a tent or a canopy up. We already have a canopy definition, we need a tent definition, and we need an ordinance to tell our businesses how they can proceed.
All right. Thank you. All right. At this point, I see no one new online, no one in the audience. I've seen more comments from the P&amp;Z commissioners and the public, and we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And we'll move on in the agenda to the next two items. Fred, do you want us to do these separate, one by one, or you want to do both?
Well, I think you need separate motions.
All right. So we'll go start with number one, discuss and possibly vote to make a recommendation regarding a draft ordinance to amend Article 31-16 definition of the municipal code of the town of Dewey Beach by adding a definition of a tent. You've got it in front of you, you've heard the discussion, commissioners, and now we're looking for a motion to adopt and approve, or make a recommendation for the town commissioners to approve definition of a tent. Is anybody willing to make a motion to approve? And then a second and discussion.
Move to accept the proposed ordinance that gives the definition of a tent.
Thank you, Dale. Second by Jack. And any discussion? I have no comments. See none. Looking to have each person vote on each one of these. So we'll start with Jack.
Aye.
All right. Dave?
Aye.
Mike Harmer?
Aye.
Dale Cook?
Aye.
Jimenez Conner?
Aye.
All right, that's approved.
So could we get, you know, this is technically an amendment to the zoning code.
Right.
And certainly the commissioners, I would ask the commissioners, when they vote on it, to give me the basis of their approval, give me, give us some
Okay, well
Your reasoning, exactly.
Well, we just went through the approval on it, so.
Yeah. So if you could, but if you could indicate that, why you think this is inappropriate, could we get some comment?
All right. So I'll start it, and then we'll go back to Jack. You know, I just think, because the town, you know, needs a definition of a tent, that's why I'm approving. I agree with the town hall's request for us to review it, and to approve, and to get a definition. And I'm going to say for the, I'll say my reason for the second one when we get to it. Jack?
I think this is really good of the town for future generations. I think this moves us in the right step forward, and it gives the commission a chance to review as well, make their decision. But this is part of local government to refer things back to them. So that's why I vote aye.
Thank you, Jack. Mark?
I vote aye, because again, it'll define what a tent is and keep everybody on the same page.
So I voted aye, just really in support of Mr. Zolfer's request to have some kind of definition of what a tent is.
Dale?
I just think the town and the businesses need the definition so they can apply the regulations to each other specifically. So that's why. I vote yes.
Thank you. Dale, Jimmy?
I voted yes, because of the reasons the other commissioners have already stated.
All right. So that's approved. Move on to number two. And then if we get to a vote, same thing, just give us a little reason. Discuss and possibly vote to make a recommendation regarding a draft ordinance to amend Chapter 185 zoning of the municipal code of town Dewey Beach, Delaware, 2005, as amended by amendment Table 3 of Section 185, 25b, uses in resort business districts to permit tents over outside service areas, as per our discussion. So looking for a motion to approve that ordinance?
Motion to approve.
And second, looking for a second?
I'll second it.
And Jimmy, second. Discussion. I think we're going to ask Fred to, you know, check all those things we talked about earlier, and put anything that he sees necessary into the recommendation, and
Can I recommend one thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Adding the word approved, non-conforming, approved outdoor. I'm the way to
Existing, non-conforming.
Approved outdoor.
Yes, that's the second paragraph of Section 1. Jimmy's saying existing, approved, non-conforming outdoor.
So that raises a question. Is that a reference to OABCC approval? Because we have not technically approved, we being the town have not technically approved these outside service areas, because they weren't conditionally approved.
Not approved.
Not, not, not the ones that were built before, that's what you're talking about, right, Fred? The ones that were built before, like the rudder that was built before. All the ones that we've approved in the last year, it would apply to, but haven't approved, so they were built.
Can we leave that out?
The town didn't approve those because they were built before the town was established.
What do you think, Jimmy? Leave that out?
So, so let's, let's note it. I mean, let's note it for the commissioners. At the very least, that's something I need to look into to see if that's an appropriate thing. But I'll
So note and add, if Fred recommends adding, but he'll discuss it with the commissioners.
Well, I'm going to indicate that the planning office, or, excuse me, the planning commission had recommended consideration of adding the word approved.
Okay. You'll, you'll give him some advice.
As to whether or not that's workable, right?
So with that friendly amendment, any other discussion? If not, we'll do a vote with a reason. And Jack, if you want to try to start that out?
Yeah, I'm an aye. I'm more like the first one. I think it's for, for the growth of the town in the right way.
Thank you.
I, I agree with Jack.
All right. Dave?
I'm going to, I'm going to agree, or agree as well. I guess my, I will have a concern, and I'll just express it. Some review of how it looks afterwards, or what, what the commissioners, is there, is there any ability in here for the commissioners to basically at some point review and say, this, this isn't appropriate for the town, the aesthetics of it out? I use the words tent city. If everybody elects one of these, is, is there an approval process or review process later? And it's not here, so. Okay.
There, there wouldn't be.
It wouldn't be.
The, the commissioners could amend the code and sure. But for those accordance with the law during the period of time that the law was in existence, I don't know. Answer a little bit, you know, if it was permanent structure that they were allowed to erect, then clearly we couldn't make them take it down. What you're suggesting, only because it's, involves temporary tenting, is raising a question as to whether or not it's easy to answer as, as a, like, certainly would be very easy to answer if we were talking about
Something like aesthetically.
I'm, yeah, the aesthetics is what I'm, I'm just
Yeah, right.
We don't, I only, we don't have a design review, so I guess I'll, I just make my comment.
All right. So you, you were
I'm still in favor.
You're in favor, okay. Mike Harmer, I'm in favor, same reason that Jack and Mark and Dave pointed out. Dale?
Dale Cook, when, when we went down the road previously from 2,000 square feet to 4,000 square feet requiring parking or not requiring parking, that changed everything in town. And this is the result of that. And we can't go back now. I don't believe we can go back now and change that. And I think for the benefit of the town and the businesses, I'm going to vote yes on the
Thank you, Dale. Jimmy?
I'm going to vote yes. I do have some concern about aesthetics as well, but I think it's for the betterment of the town. People want to sit outside, they want to dine outside.
Exactly.
It's, it's a, it's a good thing for the town.
All right. Well, votes were passed today. Thank you all. Let's see where we're headed here. Any planning commissioners' comments?
Just, yeah, just one. And I agree more that we talk about aesthetically. Is there some type of review? I mean, I, we don't have an arc, but if, if there is some type of, maybe in our next conversation, for potential review during application, to make sure that it's in line with what the town's image is pointing. And I don't know the answer to that, but I'm just making the comment. I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think that's something that needs to be looked at through our committee.
Yeah, maybe, I, I might need a comprehensive plan. You know, we could take a look at that possibly.
I don't think anybody wants to drive down the streets seeing tents.
Exactly.
I agree. That's, that's, that's all my own concern.
All right. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. I'll, okay, right. All right. Have a great rest of your day, beautiful day.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Jim.
You guys.